Good evening and welcome to our July 16th meeting of the Cary Planning and Zoning Board. I believe we have a very full agenda today, so I'm going to try to move crisply through it. First of all, we need to adopt our agenda. I would ask, are there any adjustments to the agenda? If not, could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as set.
Set.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we need to approve three sets of minutes. We're going to take a chance that we might not have any changes, so I'm going to ask if we can get a motion to approve the May 21st minutes, the June 11th work session minutes, and the May 21st regular meeting minutes. Do we have any changes to those? Seeing none, can we get a motion for the approval of all three?
I make a motion that we approve all that.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. And we're going to move right on to our public hearings. And at this point, I'd like to give just a reminder for those who might be here to speak at the public hearings, how this works. We're going to start with a presentation from our staff at podium on your right, my left. And following that, we ask the applicant to present his case for the case. We ask the applicant and the staff member to stay near the podium during the subsequent public hearing, in case we have questions. We ask if you do want to speak at the public hearing, that you queue up on this side. You're going to notice some chairs over here with labels on them. Try to queue up over there. Come down the stairway when you're ready to speak. Please fill out a comment card, give it to our clerk, and then we're going to ask you to speak at the left side podium, my right. And just as a reminder, we give five minutes for public hearings, speaking. After four and a half minutes, you're going to find that a little right light, or a little of green light on the podium here is going to turn yellow. That means you have 30 seconds left. When it turns red, that means you've used your five minutes, and I'm going to ask you to stop at that point, to keep it fair. You'll note that the board does not interact with speakers during the public hearing. It's our policy to listen rather than talk. Following the public hearing, if we have no more speakers, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then the board will ask questions of either the applicant or the staff. Having gone through that, I'd like to start with our first case, which is the Village at Park PDD Amendment. It's 12 REZ 09. Ms. Bierman?
No.
You don't look at all like Ms. Bierman.
No.
I guess we have a replacement today.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. This is a request to amend the existing Village at the Park Plan Development District. This request specifically seeks to revise the previously approved phasing plan for roadway improvements associated with the town's comprehensive transportation plan. Subject area is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of NC-55 Highway and Kit Creek Road. Slide shows the overall boundary of the Village at the Park PDD. It's shaded in purple. The proposed amendment only deals with a portion of the PDD on the south side of Kit Creek Road, between Green Level Church Road and NC-55, which is outlined here in black. Since the subject property is located in a neighborhood activity center, it's following the same process as a mixed-use rezoning, so there'll first be a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Board, and then we'll move on to a second public hearing with the Town Council before any action is taken. The request is only to amend the phasing plan associated with the PDD, and does not seek to change any of the previously approved uses. Therefore, if the request is approved, the zoning will remain PDD and not MXD. This slide shows the uses that have been constructed to date within the Village at the Park. There are multifamily dwelling developments on the northern and southernmost parts of the PDD, and elementary school on the westernmost portion of the district. The existing PDD is divided into five separate phases. Each phase corresponds with different land uses, as well as improvements to adjacent roadways based on the town's comprehensive transportation plan. The proposed amendment deals specifically with existing phases three and four, which are outlined here in red on the slide. It's important to note that this amendment does not affect improvements that are required as part of a traffic study associated with meeting the adequate public facilities ordinance. Therefore, if an improvement is required as mitigation under a traffic study, the requirement must still be met, and it's not affected by the PDD phasing plan. This slide shows the comprehensive transportation plan designation for the adjacent roadways. The area that's the subject of the request is bounded on the east by NC-55, on the north by Kit Creek Road, and on the west by Green Level Church Road, and all of these are designated as thoroughfares on the town's transportation plan. This slide shows the approved land uses and the associated transportation plan roadway improvements that are currently required at the time of developing either Phase Three or Four. The improvements are required along the respective roadway frontage of each phase. Proposed amendment seeks to reconfigure the boundaries of existing Phases Three and Four to create new Phases 4A and 4B, as shown on this slide. There would no longer be a Phase Three. As a result of the changes to the phasing boundaries, the requirements for associated roadway improvements would also change. Reconfiguring, reconfiguration of the phasing lines would result in a new Phase 4A that would allow up to 16,558 square feet of commercial uses. The remainder of the use allocations in the existing Phases Three and Four would be moved to the new Phase 4B. With regard to the transportation plan improvements, the biggest change would be to the improvements to Green Level Church Road. As a result of the new phasing, these would now be delayed until the development of Phase 4B. Under the current PDD, these improvements are to be constructed at the same time as the required improvements to NC-55 and Kit Creek Road. It's important to note that by delaying these improvements, it is possible that future development in the area may be responsible for some or all of the improvements to Green Level Church Road. For example, mitigation included in a traffic study for a future development in the area may require widening of existing Green Level Church Road. If the development of Phase 4B is not started by the time the newer development begins construction, then the newer development, not Village at the Park, would be responsible for that work. This graphic just helps to illustrate how the proposed changes to the phasing will affect the required transportation plan improvements. You see the phase figure on the right with Phase 4B. That shows the delay in the improvements to Green Level Church Road. Notice of the proposed rezoning was sent to the owners within 400 feet of the subject property. Notice of the hearing was also posted on the property and published in the Cary News. Since this proposal is following the process for a mixed-use rezoning, protest petitions are not applicable until the public hearing before the Town Council. That concludes the presentation. At this time, I believe the applicants have some comments.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning board. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the owners of Village at the Park. And I am going to go over some of what staff went over, and then give you our reasons for our justification for the request. The proposal is to revise the current phasing schedule for Track Two from Phase Three and Four to Phase 4A and 4B. The revised phasing schedule redistributes the construction schedule for the previously required Green Level Church Road widening from Phase Three and Four to Phase 4B. And as staff pointed out, no other changes are being proposed to the land use plan for Village at the Park. The current Phase Three includes 150-room hotel. Phase Four includes 94,755 square feet of commercial, 82,240 square feet of office, and 45 multifamily units. The proposed phasing schedule for Track Two includes 16,558 square feet of commercial for 4A, and the remaining square footage that I have just mentioned would be part of 4B, the Phase 4B. With the current phasing schedule, the Green Level Church Road is required to be widened for a distance of about 750 feet extending south from Kit Creek Road. This widening is required to be completed as part of the beginning of any development of Track Two. Other requirements to be triggered with any development of Track Two is the widening of Kit Creek Road for a distance of about 1,150 feet between NC-55 and Green Level Church Road, and remainder of the southbound through lane along NC-55. The applicant paid for, and the town did a traffic study to determine the requirements that would be in place for Phase 4A and 4B. And with the new traffic study, it was determined that the newly aligned Phase 4A does not warrant the Green Level Road improvements described above as part of 4A. And again, the phasing schedule would redistribute the Green Level Church Road improvement to Phase 4B. Development for Phase 4A within Track Two, of course, would include the 16,500 square feet of commercial, and it would be required to make all the road improvements that were identified for Phase Three, except for, well, for Phase Three and Phase Four with the exception of the road improvements to Green Level Church Road, and the third, southbound through lane along the frontage of plus or minus 500 feet. And even though 4A only includes a portion of road frontage along Kit Creek Road, the entire portion of Kit Creek Road would be improved as part of the beginning of any development located within Phase 4A. So the development land within Phase 4A would be required to do more than the typical road improvements that you would see with the development located where the property is located. Since the adoption of the original 2002 PDD and the previous two amendments to the phasing plan for Village at the Park, the economy has been slow, directly impacting timing and financial capabilities of potential commercial users for Village at the Park. Sites are not developing as rapidly as they were 10 years ago. As staff pointed out, there are concerns about any further revisions that would delay completion of improvements to Green Level Church Road. They feel that such a delay may encumber other future developments in the area, which may be required to construct the delayed improvements in order to comply with the town's adequate public facilities for road ordinance. In our opinion, we feel that by revising the current phasing schedule, the opportunity exists for non-residential development to finally be occurring in this area of Cary, and for the majority of the remaining road improvements that were identified as part of the approved PDD to be built. We also feel that once the land develops in Phase 4A, and those required improvements are completed, that the remaining development in Phase 4B would quickly follow behind, thus completing the remainder of the improvements associated with Phase Four and not encumbering any other future developments in the area. We believe that the town would benefit from these road improvements going in, and also from the increased tax base that would occur by finally seeing commercial development occurring in Village at the Park. The revisions to the phasing plan will not have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The same road improvements are required, they are just broken out differently. In fact, as I previously mentioned, the revised phasing plan may lead to the hastened development of land within 4B, thus causing the road improvements for Green Level to Durham Road to actually occur sooner, because development will finally be occurring in this area of Cary. We did hold a neighborhood meeting, and it was held on May 9th, 2012, and at that meeting, no one did attend. And I'm here to answer any questions, and there are other members of the development team that are also here that could answer any other questions that you have that might be more directly related to some of the traffic issues also. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I will open the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak, please come down on the stairs to my right, your left. And I see no one approaching the clerk, so I'm going to declare that our public hearing is closed, and at this point in time, we'll open the discussion up for two questions from the board. Questions?
I have an engineering question, I guess, with the traffic study that was reviewed by the city and agreed upon with those findings.
Mr. Jensen, answer that question.
Good evening. The applicant has commissioned a study. It's in a draft format right now. The preliminary findings of the report would say that 4A could stand on itself without having to do APF-type improvements. I need to make clear that that has no bearing on this particular case, and that we're talking about CTP widening, widenings, and anything above and beyond that would be mitigations needed for, as part of our APF ordinance. So they are a little bit different. They're really, a lot of people try to think that they are related, but they're not. These are actually the comprehensive transportation plan requirements they would have to do, regardless of whether a traffic study said that they need to do it or not. So did want to make that somewhat clear on that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Can I see Slide 16 again? 16? I thought it was 16. Yep. It was the slide that had the...
Is that it?
What was phasing plan? Yeah, I thought you had one that was kind of side by side of these two, as far as the road improvements under the...
Yeah.
This is 14. Okay.
Okay.
Existing is Phase Three, purple is what would road improvements under as-is, planned versus proposed. In the staff report, there's a line that says, "After development of Phase 4A, 87% of the land that would, land area that would be developed..." I'm sorry, that's development. I'm sorry, that doesn't pertain.
Okay.
But so, we're looking, under 4A, all of Kit Creek Road would be upgraded? Is that correct?
Correct.
And that, what is that?
And a portion on 55.
Eastern edge, 55?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Other questions? I just have a couple. Olston Ridge Elementary School, would they have any potential responsibility for doing the improvements on Green Level Church Road if 4B didn't happen for an extended period?
It would depend on if there's future development on that parcel. If there were future development, and there are traffic study required it, then it's possible that it could.
Okay, so it's a potential that that elementary school would have to pick up...
Not just the elementary school, any development in the area could potentially have to pick up those improvements, if their traffic study required it as mitigation.
And my second question is, clearly, folks want to do 4A first. I think I understand that, given the economic situation we're in. What is the chances that it could be an extended period of time before 4B happened?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear...
What is the chance that it could be an extended period of time before 4B actually happened?
That would be something the applicant would probably be better to answer. I mean, it's...
What I'm trying to get to is...
I mean, the PDD's been in place for quite some time, for probably six, seven years, or probably about eight years, I think, so, I mean, it's gone this long without development, so...
Obviously, we want to get that road improved to encourage development throughout this area. I'm just wondering how much we delay that by agreeing to this new phasing. And it's maybe an unfair question.
Honestly, I can't answer how long it would take to develop that, unfortunately.
I think just a question of clarification. I just want to know, by, we are delaying about 1250 feet of road development to Phase 4B, especially in North Carolina 55, we are delaying it by 500 feet, and in Green Level Church Road, 750 feet. What's the impact of that delay? Is there any problem? Will it cause any problems?
I defer that to Mr. Jensen.
From 4A to 4B?
Well, the impact on 55, again, it's just CTP widening. It, collectively, I think, a third southbound lane on 55 is what our comprehensive transportation plan calls for. This would actually connect with the widening that's already occurred out there on the track, the yellow track you see below that. When the apartments went in, they actually widened out the roadway, so this actually would connect to the third southbound lane that's out there now. So it does have some traffic benefit by allowing, you know, having that connection made now. And I think that takes you all the way down to O'Kelly, O'Kelly Chapel Road.
What about Green Church Road?
And Green Level Church Road?
Yeah, Green Level Church Road, we're delaying the San 55.
Right now, delaying it, again, as far as the development is concerned, doesn't do anything to them, but it does have some consequences for any land development that occurs within, you know, a mile of this site, potentially, if they had to do a traffic study, and that showed that in order for that particular intersection of Kit Creek and Green Level Church Road to operate within our APF ordinance, if it didn't, then they would have to make those improvements at their cost. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a cost that this particular development will absorb, because somebody else is already making those improvements. So those are the, those are the consequences of delaying it further in that, and assigning, you know, what should have been comprehensive transportation plan requirements assigned to this particular property, and so that, you know, those that are off-site may not have, may not have that exposure to those improvements. Again, if somebody coming to the area, if they wanted to develop, and they find that they had to do an improvement on Green Level Church Road up here, because it hadn't been finished yet, that may be an encumbrance on them that they wouldn't want to do, and may not want to develop in the area. So it kind of goes both ways. We might be helping this particular development kickstart, get things going again, but then on the backside, we may, we may be causing an encumbrance for other development in the area to encourage them to come in and develop as well. Hope that makes sense.
Thank you.
Would there be any difference if they didn't develop it today? I mean, that would still be the occurrence if this piece didn't develop. It still could happen.
Certainly. Like, again, if they didn't have an immediate buyer for Track 4A, and it just left it as loaned, I mean, they, it could be an encumbrance on any development as well. Absolutely.
Maybe you can just clarify for me. The proposal would have them widening 55 for just the piece of it that butts Phase 4A. Is that correct?
Correct. It's about, it's a little over 500 feet along that particular frontage of 4A, and then there'll be a remaining piece of 350 feet along Track 4B.
Okay, and you mentioned that the track directly south of it is already improved?
It is improved to a third lane, yeah.
Oh, because we're going to end up with just a little 350 foot...
We're going to end up with a little stretch, but those are basically, there are some driveway axes that they're planning on Track 4A that will basically make it a de facto right turn lane as well, until that improvement's done. I also do want to disclose to you as well that Town of Cary has a funded project to widen Highway 55 southbound for a third lane. So it's kind of, if the Town of Cary gets to it first, which I'm thinking it probably will be the case, we do plan on widening that third southbound lane, so that may be something that the developer may not actually have, have any exposure to, which is kind of a timing thing.
But, but it would make sense if they did all these improvements on 55 all at one time, get the construction in, done, and all, for that, you know, when you're only...
Well, certainly, I think it would be cost beneficial to them, and we would love to see that, but again, that's, we're kind of working on the confines of the original, or I guess the revised phasing plan as this development has occurred, and it's been allowed to do that.
Other questions? Did you have...
Michelle has one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle.
I just wanted to confirm my understanding about something. So if somebody came in today while none of it is developed, they would be liable for the Green Level Church piece, but could they have liability for the Kit Creek Road piece also, depending on their traffic study?
It certainly could, if there were some, some further mitigations that may be needed, for instance, at the intersection of Kit Creek and NC-55, if they needed additional lanes there, that they, that they may have some exposure to that.
So we're kind of reducing that exposure if we go ahead and do the development at Kit Creek Road as part of this plan?
Would it reduce that exposure?
Aren't we reducing that exposure?
It possibly could, because we're actually adding another two travel lanes on Kit Creek. We only, we only have half of that roadway built right now to its ultimate section, so we're actually adding two more through lanes on that roadway, and almost doubling the capacity of that roadway.
Okay. Thanks. I do have a question. What's the precedence on requests such as these being asked for and approved?
I unfortunately don't have any exposure over the last couple of years. We, I guess, in context, on for very large developments, we've allowed them to phase their improvements. It's, and I'm not sure if it's unique to say that they haven't come in occasionally and asked for some modification to those phasings, but generally, it's in a context of a bigger developer agreement, or things, you know, timing of things, how things get built, and so I don't, but again, we're getting to a point now, this, I believe this development was first rezoned in 2002. We're 10 years down the road, and they've substantially, about 80% of their project, and we still don't have all the improvements done as originally envisioned, but again, that's how it was phased, and how it was agreed to be phased. We have had some modifications to that phasing throughout the years, and now we're asking for continuation of, maybe even subdividing that improvement even further, so, but again, that's in context to the market, and how their ability to fund that project.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just, is there a possibility, maybe follow up to your question, if 4B is not developed, then is there going to be liability on the Town of Cary to do the rest of the development?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Other questions?
Just for clarification, the Kit Creek improvements are required under the current phasing and the proposed phasing, and they're the same.
That's correct.
And following up on Mr. Ness's question, which followed up on others, I guess, staff observation, I want to clarify that, is that the proposed phasing could delay the Green Level Church Road improvements, I guess, for an indeterminate time, and might get us into this, somebody who wants to develop has to improve these, or the town does.
I unfortunately don't have any exposure over the last couple of years. We, I guess in context, for very large developments, we've allowed them to phase their improvements. It's, and I'm not sure if it's unique to say that they haven't come in occasionally and asked for some modification to those phasings, but generally, it's in a context of a bigger developer agreement or things, you know, timing of things, how things get built, and so I don't, but again, we're getting to a point now, this, I believe this development was first rezoned in 2002. We're 10 years down the road, and they've substantially, about 80% of their project, and we still don't have all the improvements done as originally envisioned, but again, that's how it was phased and how it was agreed to be phased. We have had some modifications to that phasing throughout the years, and now we're asking for continuation of maybe even subdividing that improvement even further. So, but again, that's in context to the market and how their ability to fund that project.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just, is there a possibility, maybe follow-up to your question, if 4B is not developed, then is there going to be liability on the Town of Cary to do the rest of the development?
Absolutely.
Other questions?
Just for clarification, the Kit Creek improvements are required under the current phasing and the proposed phasing, and they're the same.
That's correct.
And following up on Mr. Ness's question, which followed up on others, I guess, staff observation, I want to clarify that, is that the proposed phasing could delay the Green Level Church Road improvements, I guess, for an indeterminate time and might get us into this. Somebody who wants to develop has to improve these, or the town does. If it doesn't develop, if 4B doesn't develop, is that reasonable interpretation?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? I believe the applicant has...
Can I just interject one point? I guess, sort of in summary of listening to what the board is saying and then listening to what Mr. Jensen is saying, as we see on the map, both 4, Phase 4, and 4A does the entire improvement for Kit Creek Road, and then we have broken up the third lane along NC-55, and of course, the Green Level Church Road improvement is waiting to Phase 4B. And I know this is things that y'all have heard before, and the council's heard before, and staff's heard before, so I'm not going to say anything probably that hasn't been, you know, voiced before. The economy came into play, you know, I don't think anybody expected the delay in the development schedule out in this area, but in a lot of places in Cary, and of course, you know, the Triangle, we've seen the delay. I think what we're hoping for here is trying to jumpstart something. I know one of the planning board members mentioned, if we did nothing, then, you know, it just continues to sit there with no road improvements, and as I understand it, as Mr. Jensen pointed out, then the next person can come in and, depending upon the type of development and the intensity of development, could have any number of these improvements part of their project. What we're hoping for here is a way to get something going so hopefully it can spark the market and more development can occur. I just, I do need to just reiterate that with this proposal, the town is still getting all of Kit Creek Road and approximately plus or minus 500 and 500 feet of that westbound lane on NC-55. So, you know, by no means are we trying to get out of what, you know, all of it. You know, potentially, we could have tried to see if we could have gotten out of a portion of Kit Creek, but we knew that there was a limit, of course, of what was practical. So, we do feel that we have put forth a compromise that would allow a good portion of those road improvements to occur and hopefully speed up the process. But again, I don't think anybody here has a crystal ball as to when that might occur, but I do know that up till this point, we haven't seen anything occur there. So, what we're hoping for is this would be a way to jumpstart some development out there.
Can I ask you a follow-up question, then?
Yes, sir.
I think it's great that you're doing all of Kit's Creek.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, and it costs a lot of money to get road construction gear onsite, and you're going to have to do a significant amount of roadwork on 55 for 4A.
Right.
Given the fact that you decided to just do all of Kit's Creek, did you think about just doing 4B too rather than having to bring road construction equipment?
You mean the 4B on 55?
Yes.
I'd have to defer that to somebody else on my team because I don't know that answer.
It just would make sense, because we're going to end up with a little 350-foot chunk that isn't widened, and you're already going to have your construction stuff there.
Right.
And you've very generously, I think, agreed to do all of Green Level Church if you're really going to do 4B anyway. It's a question.
So, I could consult for a moment and come back?
Do we have a problem with that? Go ahead, take a minute.
Okay.
This is the longest pause we've had in our discussions, as long as I've been on the board.
Can we have a discussion among us on one topic on this subject, or should we wait?
I think we need a motion to do that.
It's not great.
Well, we can most certainly ask other questions of the staff if you have other questions. I don't think it's appropriate to do a motion until the applicant comes back.
Not a motion, but just clarification between us is what I wanted to have.
Oh, I think that's normal discussion.
All right. My question would be, should we be putting a condition that the 4B approval?
We can't make conditions.
Okay.
Isn't that what the discussion is right now?
Well, the applicant can offer something. I don't think we can.
We can't on a PDD?
I don't believe we can. Staff, can you give us a clarification? Somebody with expertise here, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. You're wondering about conditions or?
Our assumption is that we can't place a condition on a motion, but the applicant can offer one. Is that correct?
They can offer one. You could also, I mean, another option is you could also, as part of a recommendation to the council, make a recommendation of things that, you know, you may find make it more tenable.
So, in response to your question, even though it's a small part, given what they're already constructing and the physical area of that small location, they feel that that would be cost prohibitive, so at this moment, they want to stick to what they've got here.
Okay. So, at this point, unless we have other pre-motion discussions, I think we need a motion from someone.
I'll make a motion, but I might need help from legal, just to be sure I'm doing this correctly. I would like to make a motion. I move that the board forward case, make sure I've got that right correctly, to 10 REZ-09.
12.
12, thank you, sorry, see I'm looking. 12, 10, 12, REZ-09, thank you very much, to Town Council with a recommendation for denial, and I'm going to say that it is not consistent with the comprehensive plan and other applicable plans, and denial is reasonable and in the best interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report, and that is that it does not meet the adequate, that, this is my thought on this, I want to make sure this is correct with legal, that it doesn't meet our ordinance. They're coming in asking for a zoning condition because it doesn't meet our ordinance, and it wouldn't meet the adequate
Public facilities.
Public facilities plan. That's my understanding, but I want to make sure. No? I'm getting a no.
Let me see if I can give you a little bit of clarity. There are two transportation requirements on this project. One is a comprehensive transportation plan requirement for road widenings of thoroughfares that may be adjacent to a site. Second part, which does not apply tonight because it's not a site plan or something where they would be required to do a traffic study and have a certificate of compliance for our adequate public facilities for roads, so the ordinance that you really want to refer to would be about the conference, meeting the comprehensive transportation plan.
Thank you.
Hope that's helpful.
That is exactly what I was looking for. So, let me clarify that I believe it is not consistent with the comprehensive transportation plan, and that denial is reasonable in the best interest, in the public interest, for the reasons set forth in the staff report.
I second the motion.
Discussion?
Well, I'm going to vote against the motion, mainly because I think that it, that the plan provides a reasonable way to deal with a very difficult economic situation, and because Phase 3 calls for 150-room hotel, I think that that's an impediment to the actual development of Phase 4 being done, and I think that that will actually cause it to go even longer, and an increased risk to the elementary school, increased risk to additional development that may come in and end up with those liabilities, rather than giving them the ability to generate some activity on this parcel and getting that Kit Creek Road piece finished with this proposal. So, that's my reasoning behind that.
Other comments?
I'm in agreement with Michelle as well. I think you're getting a lot of improvements for the small amount of area that you're actually developing today. Otherwise, that area would still be, there's still liability potential for other people in the future, so I think it limits some of that risk. The one thing I would say is, I guess I would be in favor of doing all of NC-17 if we got to that point, but...
I'm sorry.
Or NC-55, excuse me. Thank you.
I thought maybe I missed something. Other comments?
I'll make a comment about the motion. I've been on planning and zoning work for six and a half years. I don't remember ever getting something that came in asking for a change in the plan of, in the transportation plan of how things get developed. And I'm not to say it's not, hasn't happened, I just don't, to my, best of my knowledge, I don't remember that. We're all in the same economic situation, all the developers are, and I worry that if we do this, we're on a slippery slope of what is allowed and the precedence that it sets.
Other comments?
I guess I would tend to agree with Ms. Rudy that the potential, sort of, what has been characterized as a jumpstart we might get here, to me, the future risk is greater.
Others?
I think comments I would make have already been made by Ms. Rudy and Mr. Miller, so I'll just let that stand.
Okay, I guess I'll interject something here. I certainly appreciate why the current phasing is very difficult, particularly with the hotel. So, I absolutely get why the applicant wants to change the phasing. What I'm uncomfortable with, frankly, is that little hunk of Highway 55 that we're not going to finish. It strikes me that this phasing is motivated, A, by economic situation that probably doesn't justify the hotel, but also it significantly reduces the amount of comprehensive transportation plan improvements would normally be required. So, I'm really torn. I'd love to see something get started in this area. Clearly, doing nothing is a very unhappy predicament, but I'm also uncomfortable with leaving a 350-foot stub. And so, I have to admit, this is about as on the fence as I've been on one.
Mr. Jim, I don't know what the protocol is, but I think even though I seconded the motion, I would be comfortable if I could have a condition in the resolution that the 4B not be allowed to develop unless the, all the road development has been done, is done along with the approval of the 4B. So, the Phase 4B will not be initiated until the road development has been done. I don't know whether that's feasible to do it.
Well, let me say, since I put the motion out there, I might feel similarly, but we were told by staff that 55 is basically whoever gets to it first, and there's a good chance the town might get to it first. So, to me, that doesn't hold much weight, but that's my rationale.
Then I will continue with my seconding the resolution.
Earlier, we had the question, can we suggest amendments? I'm sympathetic with the applicant. I understand why he wants to change the phasing. It makes perfect sense. I would feel much more comfortable about this if we didn't have a 350-foot piece of road that's likely to either be a Town of Cary responsibility or be a missing piece of the road improvement that we're going to stick this up for an extended period. And so, I'm going to ask legal or staff, can I even make a friendly, suggest a friendly amendment around that 350-foot piece of 55 or not? How does that work?
Well, I think we also heard from the applicant that they weren't interested in that anyway, right?
Well, what I'm suggesting to you is, could we put a condition on our, I guess we can't, can we?
Because it's for the denial.
We can't do it, so this is...
The denial, isn't it?
So, I guess it's too late for questions, but if I had a question, it would be that right now, as it stands, without any development occurring there at all, it's likely that the town will get to it first, and they will have a liability for that entire stretch. However, if this project went through as proposed, the town's liability would be for the 350-foot stretch, and the other stretch would be the liability of the developer. And I see your point.
It's actually a good point.
But I'm still going to go with...
Other discussion? Okay, I guess I have to call a vote, then. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Negate.
So, that motion carries, I believe there's three of you? Six to three.
Gestion.
Moving on to our next case. Our next case, I believe, is Highcroft Village 12 CPA 01. And this is Ms. Redling?
Yes. Good evening. This case is a request by Glenda Topin Associates to change the future land use plan designation of 15.6 acres from a combination of medium-density residential, high-density residential, and mixed use to a single designation of medium-density residential. The subject property is located at 1640 Wakana Road in Northwest Cary, approximately 1,600 feet west of Highway 55. Carpenter Fire Station Road is located to the north here. Green Hope School Road is to the south, just off this map down here, and a future section of Morrisville Parkway is planned to run through the property here. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified by mail of the CPA request, and the property was posted and advertised according to ordinance requirements. The subject property outlined in yellow is a portion of a larger associated rezoning request, case number 12 REZ-06, which is depicted by the blue dotted line on this map. Approximately, the lower two-thirds of this property, of the property, the subject property, is a part of the Highcroft Village PDD master plan that was approved in 2005 and includes this property down here. So, just to help you understand its relationship to the Highcroft Village PDD. The subject property is divided between the Northwest Area Plan and the Southwest Area Plan. For ease of reference, this slide joins the plans into one map. The green line across the middle of the property here represents a future streetscape along the route of the future Morrisville Parkway. The property is currently designated for three types of land uses. The area above the future Morrisville Parkway is currently designated for medium-density residential. That's defined as three to eight dwelling units per acre. Below the future roadway, there is a section designated for high-density residential, eight or more units per acre, and a very small section here is designated for mixed use, which is defined as a mix of commercial office and medium-to-high-density residential. The applicant is requesting that the designations of high-density and mixed use be removed so that there is a single future land use designation of medium-density residential for this property. This slide shows proposed greenways and trails in the vicinity, including a proposed multi-use trail along the future Morrisville Parkway extension, and Cary's GIS maps indicate two stream buffers may impact this property. The Morrisville Parkway extension will ultimately be a four-lane median-divided road and 105-foot right-of-way. The roadway will be constructed initially as a two-lane median-divided road and later widen to four lanes when traffic necessitates it. Sidewalk is planned for the south side, and a multi-use trail is planned for the north side. Wakana Road is designated as a future two-lane undivided collector street with a bike lane and curb and gutter in a 60-foot right-of-way. Sidewalks are planned for both sides of that street. Triangle Transit Route 311 operates on NC-55 nearby. A portion of the subject parcel is zoned R40, and the remainder is zoned Plan Development District Major, PDD Major. The PDD portion reflects... The PDD portion reflects its inclusion in the Highcroft Village PDD master plan approved in 2005 that I mentioned earlier. The subject parcel is part of the larger associated rezoning request that's being considered separately from this plan amendment case, but I'm mentioning it here because it's a little bit confusing. The proposed zoning is shown, the entire proposed zoning is shown here, and again, the parcel we're concerned with tonight is here. But you will see this rezoning case come before you in, probably in September. At the Town Council public hearing on May 24th, no citizens spoke for or against this proposed plan amendment. And the Land Development Ordinance states that proposals to amend the comprehensive plan should address one or more of the four conditions shown here. As detailed in your staff report, staff believes that the requested plan amendment does address the first condition, a change in projections or assumptions from those on which the comprehensive plan is based. In our analysis, staff has considered that there have been two comprehensive plan amendments in recent years that have changed assumptions about how this area would further develop. In 2005, a plan amendment removed the southern half of the subject property from a proposed mixed-use activity center that was associated with Highway 55 and Morrisville Parkway, and re-designated it for medium-density residential with a small amount of high-density. Then in 2007, a plan amendment changed the northern portion of the property from a designation of very-low-density residential to medium-density residential. The result of these amendments is the 15.6-acre subject property that we have tonight with three land use designations, two stream buffers, and a future roadway. Staff believes the areas designated for high-density and mixed use are somewhat constrained and small at this point for optimal development of these parking-dependent uses. Also, the opportunity to associate these types of uses, high-density, mixed-use, with the planned mixed-use area at the southwest corner of Highway 55 and Morrisville Parkway has disappeared as that area has evolved in a different manner. For these reasons, staff recommends that the future land use map be amended such that the subject property has a single future land use designation of medium-density residential. This concludes staff's presentation of the comprehensive plan amendment. Now, the applicant's representative, Glenda Top, will present comments about the land use plan amendment.
Hello again. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates. Staff's done a marvelous job describing the proposed amendment. I'm just going to add that for all the reasons that staff pointed out, there are three different designations, there have been changes in the area, some, the Wakina area came in for their own request for medium-density in their area. So we feel that with the development patterns that are here and the size of the remaining MXD and high-density residential, that the most appropriate use for this area is medium-density and to have only one designation. There was no one who spoke at the public hearing, and as staff pointed out, assuming this gets approved, then it would come back to you at a later meeting for the rezoning portion of it. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and there also is an engineer from the team who's here also. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I will open the public hearing. Anyone that would wish to address this request, please approach the clerk. Anyone all? Seeing no one approaching the clerk, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to open discussions and questions from the board. Questions?
A couple. This CPA request does not affect the inclusion of this in the Highcroft PDD by itself, right?
No, that would be a part of, that will be dealt with with rezoning.
Right, the anticipated rezoning is to get all of it, the entire thing, right?
Well, is to add, the rezoning will be to add land to the existing Highcroft Village PDD and then maybe change some zoning conditions.
And just a question on this slide. The proposed land use, the green buffer seemed to have disappeared. Is that just an artifact of the way it was drawn?
Yes, I apologize for that.
Just making sure. Thank you.
Other questions?
I'll make motion. I move that the board forward case number 12 CPA 01 to Town Council with a recommendation for approval to amend the land use plan as proposed. I'll circle.
Oh, yeah, no, he did it right. CPA. Yes. Sorry.
We were just checking the legal. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Who was the second?
Who was the second? I was.
John.
I was sure it would be fine. I was shy.
Thank you. I was busy writing and.
Sorry.
All right. No discussion? In that case, I'm going to call the vote. All in favor of the proposal is aye? Say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, I think unanimously. And now we'll move on to our last public hearing. It's Site Design Standards Update. It is Ms. Chandler. Good.
You didn't see me coming?
Well, I'm not very good at seeing people at the podium tonight. I missed the first one.
Well, that is just fine. Good evening. This is the Site Design Standards Project. It updates and replaces the Design Guidelines Manual that was adopted in 2001. The schedule ahead is, staff anticipates Town Council action next month, and we had a work session with you last month. There are four core site design standards, vehicular circulation, building placement, pedestrian circulation, and community spaces. One statement we have added, staff has added since the Town Council public hearing as well as the Planning and Zoning Board work sessions, we've added this statement to further clarify the flexibility in the Site Design Standards document, and this has been added in the introduction. The first of the core standards, vehicular circulation, the big concept here is creating an organized street network and organizing parking and breaking it down into more manageable pieces. This is the arboretum on Weston Parkway and Harrison Avenue. The pink line shows an internal street connecting the two major roadways. This is the Walmart in Harris Teeter down on Kildare Farm Road and Tryon Road. The gray dash lines show how this parking area could begin to be broken up. This diagram shows parking pods. A parking pod is no more than 200 spaces, and those spaces will be separated by a street or a primary travelway or a pedestrian plaza space. This is the office off of Regency Parkway, and the sketch overlay on the left shows how the parking area can be broken into more reasonable-sized pods. The second core standard is building placement. The big concept here is siding a building to front a street. That also includes information about entrances, service-in-loading, and out parcels. And we have made some changes to the out parcel items since the Town Council public hearing as well as the Planning and Zoning Board work session. This is an example of a building sided immediately adjacent to a major roadway. This picture of Stone Creek Village shows a double bay of parking. This still counts as being sided on a major roadway. And this building is an example of how one may be sided on an internal street. One of the requirements in the Site Design Standards document for building placement includes entrances. When a building is sided on a major thoroughfare collector, there must be an entrance on a building facade or an architectural treatment that feels like an entrance. This is an example of an architectural treatment. These are two examples of how service-in-loading may be treated. And this is the example we've been using throughout the project for out parcels. This is Mimi's Cafe in the AT&amp;T store on Walnut Street. And in the previous, or the version of the Site Design Standards document that went to Town Council public hearing, the statement was to group out parcel buildings in groups of two or more with no vehicular use area between the two buildings. We have had some comments and discussion and concerns from the development community on the feasibility of siding buildings in this manner. The intent of grouping the out parcels is to eliminate the out parcel island effect. That's when you have out parcels with parking that completely surround them, and it makes them feel very separate, and they're not walkable when designed that way. So the revision to the out parcel language in the Site Design Standards document, it's to limit the space between two out parcel buildings to 100 feet or less. And what that does is that does not allow more than, doesn't allow more parking than would make it non-walkable. The third core standard is pedestrian circulation. The big concept here is to create a complete pedestrian circulation network into, within, and between developments. This is an example of pedestrian circulation around and into a development. This is one through a development, and also through a development connecting parking areas and also a way to get to adjacent developments. The fourth core standard is community gathering spaces. That includes, also includes pedestrian entrances and standards to make best management practices or BMP site amenities. This is the fairly new gathering space at Waverly Place. It's a great space that includes a water feature and is really attracts people. This is an example of a gathering space at an office park off of Weston Parkway. And entrances create the opportunity for sense of place and good pedestrian connections. This is a portion of the Arts Alfresco that signifies a pedestrian connection into a town greenway. For BMPs, a site amenities, these are examples of buyer retention areas that do a nice job of transitioning to the natural landscape. This is just a different BMP that does a nice job of also transitioning to the natural landscape. Let's say as a Part B to this agenda item, also up for your review and recommendation is an amendment to the Community Appearance Manual, and this proposal is to increase the required masonry material to 75% for attached residential in the Town Center District. So following the public hearing, the board may make a recommendation for both the Site Design Standards document as well as the amendment to the Community Appearance Manual, and staff does recommend approval of these items. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to open the public hearing and invite anyone that would like to address us to come down to the clerk. We aren't batting very well tonight. We do have someone.
I'm Craig Duer, Vice Chair of the Triangle Community Coalition, and I only have one kind of more of a question. We've been working back and forth with staff on these Site Design Standards. Our organization met with them, and we went through some of them, and the one standard that came back to me that concerned me that I wanted to make sure, I haven't seen it in its full version from talking with Meredith and Kevin Hales with staff, is the language associated with the stormwater management facilities. There was some concern expressed to us about the ability to have retaining walls with stormwater devices, and if they are prohibited in these Site Design Standards, that's going to be a very big problem. There were some language that I saw Kevin share that gave options. If you are to use retaining walls, it needs to do this, this, or this in order to be more of an amenity, and we support that, but to prohibit them altogether is, you can't develop. And even one of the photos that she saw up there of the buyer retention area had a big retaining wall associated with it. I just wanted to make sure the Planning and Zoning Board understood that before making a recommendation or if staff can comment on how that language is written or how they think it could be receptive. I'd appreciate that on behalf of the Triangle Community Coalition. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address us? Seeing no one approached the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up to questions from the board.
Could we start with what we just heard of the public hearing? Could you maybe comment on the discussions or?
Certainly, certainly. We have talked with the Triangle Community Coalition a few times, and staff is aware of their concerns. And as far as the hardscape transitions, in the Site Design Standards document, there is no language that refers to that. In the associated land development ordinance amendments, that will be the next agenda item that's under, the first item we'll hear that's a non-public hearing. We do have a revision to that section that gives opportunities to do hardscape transitions with certain criteria, and I'm happy to go over that now, however it may be more appropriate with the associated LDO amendments.
So it's not in this item, and it will come up later?
Right. That's correct.
All right, thank you. But they are related.
Other questions?
They are related?
Yes, it's related. They all work together.
Other questions?
I have one, but I need to. If anybody else has a question first, I'd be more than happy.
I'll make a filler comment.
Okay, thanks.
It's not as if we aren't interested in these things. We spent considerable time during a work session reviewing this, and we wore ourselves out with all our questions then, so I'm really suggesting that it's not that we don't care, it's just that we spent a great deal of time on this already.
To follow up on that, I was representative from the Planning and Zoning Board to the advisory committee that worked with Meredith and all the rest of the staff. It was a cross-section of the community. It had development interests, interested citizens, P and Z. We had a second P and Z representative, Harry Balch. His term actually expired during all the work that was being done on the Site Design Standards, and I think it's fair to say it represents hundreds of person-hours of work and questions and review that's gone into it.
Did we give you enough time?
Yes. I'd like to go back to the out parcels, 4.4, page 11 on the design standard. And I want to make sure I understand what the 100 feet apart is going to look like.
Okay.
Can you talk to us in terms of parking lot spaces? How far apart is that? How would that kind of look? I'm not sure I'm comfortable yet.
Okay, certainly. With the plan view picture that we see on this slide, if you know where the Mimi's and the AT&amp;T are, those are very close together. The, I believe it's a bank that is southeast of AT&amp;T. The space between that bank and the AT&amp;T is 160 feet. So if you can imagine going to the southeastern edge of the road that separates the bank out parcel from AT&amp;T, that would be about 100 feet, so that's what you could fit in that distance. What you can get through there is a lane of vehicular traffic and a bay of parking and pedestrian circulation. And the concern that came up from the development community members that we spoke to had to do with siding drive-throughs. And we have language in the Site Design Standards as well as the associated LDO amendments that say you cannot face canopy drive-throughs like the kind you see with a bank adjacent to a roadway. And so this bank is an example of where it is better to place the bank drive-through, because those types with the big canopies have an architectural impact that isn't necessarily what we're looking for as far as the architectural statement on a street. So in order to allow space for drive-throughs and vehicular circulation, vehicular circulation around an out parcel building, so we came up with that 100 feet. We thought it was big enough to let the circulation work, but small enough to prevent what I like to call that island effect.
And that's for just any out parcel? Could be just one out parcel, correct?
As long as there are two. If it's just one, there's not much you can do about grouping, but if there are two or more, the two have to be grouped together. So there are three, two would be grouped together, and one has a little more flexibility. If there are four, we expect two and two.
Thank you.
You mind if I just follow up?
Please do.
It somewhat happens, it sometimes happens that out parcels are actually sold to the tenant in the out parcel. If one tenant buys an out parcel, does he have some sort of obligation, given this rule, to say that if another out parcel wants to come in, he has to merge with them?
Right, there is some element of first in here, if that makes sense. Right, there is some element of first in here, if that makes sense. So when, when staff would review a plan for, a site plan for an out parcel, we would have to consider the future or potential layout for anything new or redevelopment adjacent to that. We'd have to consider how something in the future would work with what we are reviewing now. Does that make sense?
Well, I think you confused me just a little bit.
Oh, no.
Let me see if we can sort this out. I am a restaurant.
Yes.
And I just bought an out parcel for my restaurant. Don't know whether anybody else is going to want to have an out parcel near me or not when I build my restaurant. Now, are you saying that we're going to constrain how that restaurant could build because somebody might want to have another out parcel or something nearby?
Based on lot configuration or shopping center configuration or subdivision lot lines, we would anticipate if there would be another out parcel adjacent to the restaurant that we're talking about. And I guess staff wouldn't, or the regulations wouldn't be saying the restaurant has to be built a certain way. We would be, wherever the building is placed on the site, it's actually potentially limiting its neighbor's building placement.
That only partially cleared it up for me, but I, I think I understand what you're saying, but it...
I think what would happen is that the, you wouldn't have the ability just to go and buy an out parcel. An out parcel gets created by laying out the overall development. So where the out parcels are get looked at at step one, and the configuration of out parcels and the relationships of those gets done step one. And you know as you buy an out parcel what the arrangement is going to be. So you just don't go out and create out parcels. The review of the placement of out parcels and buildings get done when that overall master site subdivision plan is created. So you would, staff, we would be looking at that as, as part of the first step. So when you buy your out parcel for your restaurant, the other out parcels and designations would have been looked at already. Is that right?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one. Ms. Chandler, if you could go to the, the staff recommendation slide that had the second item, I just wanted to clarify something.
This, this one or the, this one?
Either one.
Okay.
The community appearance manual, can you just say how that relates to the site design standards manual?
The way it relates is that we're hopefully all talking about good design. It's just a design component. It was something that's been on staff's to-do list, and we tagged it along the appearance manual amendment with the site design standards project. So as far as motions and comments, we're looking for two separate recommendations.
Right. And then I guess I have one more question, which would be about a motion, and it might be for our attorney's department. This doesn't, this is a plan, it doesn't fit any of the typical land use ones, is it closer to one than others?
This acts the same way as the design guidelines manual. It updates and replaces that.
But the design guidelines manual itself is not a comprehensive plan amendment, it's not a rezoning, it's not a...
It's referred to in the...
Looking for guidance on the motion.
Sure, it's referred to in the land development ordinance, but I'll let Ms. Simpson clarify.
As you said, to make sure that we...
Sorry, Ms. Glover.
I think for purposes of your motion, it's just a simple motion to recommend approval or denial.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
And then later on, we will be able to take up an LDO amendment, right?
Right.
Got it.
Right. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion if there aren't any other questions, and I'll do them one at a time.
Thank you.
So I move that we forward the site design standards document, known as PL 12031, to town council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Discussion? No discussion?
I'll just, can I just real quickly say that, you know, we had this as a work session and we reviewed this. It looks like a great document to help move forward, and I just want to give kudos to staff and all of the people that have worked on the task force, including Brent. And, you know, looking over the seven design principles kind of takes us back to what we look at day in, day out with these and what staff looks at. So kudos to the staff.
Thank you. And thank you to, the focus group was fabulous, they all worked very hard.
Others? I'd just like to make a comment as well. It is work like this, I think, that makes Cary unique. A lot of times, people say, you know, Cary is really special, but they don't know exactly why. And I think it's because we take a whole bunch of little jigsaw pieces and put them together in exactly the right way. And I think this is an example of a really good jigsaw piece that fits into our overall aesthetic. And so again, I want to thank you guys for working hard, all of you guys. If there are no other comments, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. And next, I believe we can move on to our cases.
Well, I think they wanted a motion on the recommendation.
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll make one unless someone else wants to.
You're on a roll.
A move that we also forward to town council with a recommendation for approval, the amendment to the appearance manual as presented by staff.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion? So call the vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
I believe that's unanimous as well. And now we can move on to our cases without public hearing. And the first one is our land development ordinance round 22A. And I believe you're still on the hot seat.
I am. Thank you, good evening again. These are the land development ordinance amendments that are associated with the site design standards project. This is round 22A. The amendment items include landscaping, building design, and parking requirements, as well as vehicular circulation, pedestrian circulation requirements, and other related amendments. Schedule is the same for the site design standards document. We're looking at potential town council action in August. For public comments and concerns that we've heard since the town council public hearing as well as the planning and zoning board work session. At our planning and zoning board work session, you all asked about comments from the site design focus group and the community at large, if there are any major concerns about the requirements. And I mentioned that through the focus group, we worked through concerns and that the community's number one goal was walkability and strengthening pedestrian circulation. We also talked about pedestrian circulation to and from transit stops and community gathering spaces. And from the community and like the Triangle Community Coalition and some other developers and consultants, there were some questions and concerns about the stormwater hardscape transitions that Mr. Dur mentioned, as well as the feasibility of locating out parcels adjacent to one another, which we have discussed in the site design standards document portion. For landscaping standards, since the town council public hearing and the planning and zoning board work session, we've added some text related to parking lot landscaping. We've also added text about the criteria for allowing use of hardscape transitions. And since that was a comment and concern a moment ago, let me take a look at some of the text there. We have three criteria, and I'll read just a brief part of it. It says, "The planning director may allow the use of hardscape transitions for developments outside of a mixed-use center based on the location and public visibility of the proposed stormwater device. Where used, visible hardscape transitions shall be, shall be subject to the following criteria." So they may be used, and they're subject to the exterior surface of the wall consisting of decorative material, and the location of the stormwater device, and then the design of the wall being tiered. So when you have a wall that is one piece and a strong vertical line, it can have a sort of a jarring effect versus a tiered wall that is shaped and stepped down that is, has a softer appearance. For building design standards, we revise the text for grouping out parcels, as we have discussed. For off-street parking requirements, the text has just been mildly clarified for some of the parking pot items, but it's basically stayed the same. For onsite circulation, this goes back to vehicular circulation that we talked about with the site design standards document. An organized and complete street network must be provided, and with small sites, these connections can be provided through adjacent properties. For pedestrian circulation, we have added some text about aligning linear parking lot islands with sidewalks to major building entrances. So when designing that parking lot and breaking that parking up and creating the pedestrian circulation network, these pieces all working together, that needs to be lined up so it's logical and people can walk to the entrance of a building. And we made several clarifications for the minor modification criteria in establishing the appeal process in chapter three of the LDO. Staff recommends approval of the proposed LDO amendments for site design standards as presented. And that concludes the presentation, and staff's available for your questions.
Questions? Again, it isn't because we don't care, it's because we spent a lot of time on this in the work session. No que, Ms. Mira?
Question. What, what triggers the need for the tiered, that, that tiered surface in, in that hard wall?
Mind if I read that item from the notes?
Yeah.
It says, "The design of the wall shall be tiered in order to accommodate plantings installed to soften the mass of the upper half of the wall height. Draping plant material at the top of the wall may be acceptable in circumstances in which the wall height is limited and the tiered structure is not appropriate." So it has to do with proper spacing for plant material.
So the assumption is that it's always tiered, unless it's a very small wall?
Right, we're, correct.
Okay.
Follow-up question, are there any definitions of those wall heights?
Don't believe so. I think that's a, that's a great comment. That's something we'd certainly clarify between now and town council action. And that's also something we could add as an example in the site design standards document, wherever it makes more sense, we can, staff can look at that.
Other questions? Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we forward land development ordinance text amendments round 22, site design, site design standards to town council with recommendation for approval as it is consistent with comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and it is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion?
Did we want to make any changes or a condition addition for like the height of tiered walls? Is that automatically taken care of?
I mean, I can change that, but I think, I have faith that the staff will get that...
No, it's fine. I was just wondering if we need to?
I wrote it down.
Other discussion? And that case, we're going to call the vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And now we're going to move on to LDO round 22, I should say, land development ordinance round 22B. And this, this round has to do with backyard chickens.
Good evening. This as well is a LDO amendment that the board has seen at a prior work session that deals with introducing backyard chickens into more residential lots within Cary. By way of history, our existing ordinance, the zoning ordinance, LDO, land development ordinance, only allows domestic fowl on our larger lots in our R40 and R80 zoning districts. And we have representative from police department, Major Tony Godwin is with us, and he'll talk in a minute about the town code, the, the other ordinance that the town utilizes, deals with animal control and nuisances, and it addresses the keeping of animals as well. So you have two amendments, or we as a community have two amendments that are going hand-in-hand as this moves forward. Zoning and land development and the town code dealing with keeping of animals and nuisances because they address different things. In terms of chronology, back in February, the council asked staff to investigate allowing this activity, and so what kind of regulations might we consider, and had some suggested components to potential regulations. We went back to council in April and received guidance from council on answering some particular questions related to that and request to continue proceeding with preparation of these regulations. May 24th was a town council public hearing, and as mentioned, on June 11th, this board conducted a work session dealing with all of these ordinance amendments. The amendments relate to, first, the town code dealing with definitions and allowing this practice, and also dealing with ways to handle how and when one would define a nuisance in this particular case. And then under the land development ordinance, we also need to amend our definitions and add new terminology. We would, in simple, add this activity as an accessory use, like we have many other accessory land uses that occur in residential areas or other zoned areas. And we would then spell out some appropriate standards for conducting this activity, just like our prior item. You have this this evening, and it's anticipated that town council could consider and take action on these amendments at their first meeting in August. The LDO amendments would allow for changing to have use tables to allow in chapter five as an accessory use and amend chapter 12, and then those town code changes synchronize with the land development ordinance. In terms of public comments that we've received, either from the public hearing that the council conducted, or contacts outside of that process, so we've received calls, emails, and inquiries about this, and then comments that the board had at your work session, we just list some of these and have responded and made adjustments. So you'll see a few of those changes as we go forward with this, with our recommendations for the amendments. There was requests to add, or others opposed to adding, some sort of neighbor approval or notice provision, so that if somebody was interested in keeping chickens, that before they could do that, they would have to go secure approval from adjacent neighbors before submitting it to the town. We had requests to treat it or not regulate it as strenuously as we might, and then just kind of allow it, and then if a nuisance occurred, then we would have to go after the fact and handle a nuisance. There were, the initial recommendation or request from council at the time was to allow 10 hens. As staff looked at this, we thought a more reasonable number in a municipal setting might be six, so drafted it that way. We have had requests to go higher with that number of, say, eight to 10, to account for the age of chickens and, and keeping them and having a sufficient number of egg-laying hens available, which would then equate to about six. So you may end up needing more than six as they got older in order to equal six egg-producing hens. So that's still out there for consideration. There were concerns about the accessory use permit fee, so that when one was, is going to establish a coop and pen areas, et cetera, they would first come to the town, to the planning department, and secure a, an accessory use permit, that that $50 fee was too high. It is a one-time fee that would be done in conjunction with applying for that accessory use permit. Folks also just have generally said, consider staffing or resource demands as we move forward with this. There were several comments that what we originally proposed in terms of setbacks, that where the setbacks for this activity would match the side and rear setbacks that already exist within our residential districts, that that was too complicated, and there was a request to allow coops just one flat distance. In this particular case, we've had requests down to five feet from the property line. And since we were dealing with backyard hens, the draft isolated the activity to the rear of... of lots behind the main rear facade or rear wall of a house, but folks were asking, well, we ought to be able to allow it inside yards as well, because that could be areas that it could operate in, but at this point, it's just in the rear. Some requests to have more regulation or information that stipulates how potential owners would have to design and build their coops in terms of amounts of space per hen or chicken, et cetera, et cetera. The current regulations don't do that. And there were also has been some-- have been some suggestions for things like trial periods or a sunset clause, so maybe trying the ordinance for a while, see how it goes, and then make it quote-unquote permanent. Originally, staff suggested not doing that, because we always could treat any particular new ordinance in that fashion and say, we've adopted an ordinance, it's been two years, it is not working the way we as a community would like it to work, and we're going to change it or eliminate it, and you can always do that. So rather than setting it up and having to come back and revisit it on purpose, here you could leave it in place if things were going okay. So in terms of the amendments, we are specifically in the land development ordinance in Section 534, and we would create, as we've described to you, two different categories. One where that's applicable for our R-40 and R-80 zoning, just the way it is today, no changes there, your very, I mean, minimal regulations, no permit required, we haven't touched that. We focus instead on keeping of chickens in the smaller lot zoning districts. So R-20, R-12, residential eight, transitional residential, and those equivalent zoning districts in our planned development districts or in a mixed-use zoning district area where the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet or greater. The standards that are then spelled out, as you see in the ordinance, are that you need an accessory use permit, a maximum of six hens. All of this is for personal use, this is not a commercial operation, raising and selling chickens or eggs. No roosters allowed, everybody agreed to that, and that suitable enclosures must be provided for the keeping of hens in backyards. And then this goes on to say, the coops, pens, and things that are known as tractors, they're sort of portable movable enclosures, are only allowed in the rear yards. A couple of changes that are shown for you now in yellow. Staff, in hearing all of the comments, has said, maybe it would be easier just to have a uniform setback from any property line, so whether it's side or rear, we're not going to have to go and figure it out. It's-- staff did not agree with a request for five feet. We went to, and that kind of matches our side yard setbacks anyway, sort of a uniform 10-foot setback in every direction, side, rear, or the other side, assuming you have a rectangular parcel. And that, there were questions then about, within the fenced-in areas that folks would have, could they allow hens to run around outside the, sort of the specific pen areas? And say, I suppose I had a pen that I created, and I met that 10-foot setback, but I also had a picket fence around my perimeter of my property, can I allow the hens to run around outside the, say, the chicken fencing, but also, but still within my yard? And we made it clear that, no, that was not the intent, that all the chicken and keeping activity would be in specific areas, and all of that activity would occur 10 feet from any adjoining property. So that was clarification, trying to help on that particular provision. And then there are related sort of maintenance and operational standards, dealing with feed, water, keeping areas clean, securing feed in closed containers, made it very clear that outdoor slaughter is prohibited, so we had clarification on that. And then how you handle chicken manure or dead chickens is the same language that was there. So Major Godwin can cover, and then manure and composting have to meet the town code. So in terms of those code amendments.
Yes, and then we did have, like we mentioned in the work session, a few things to do with the town code. Specifically in 63, we had to work on the definitions, specifically to talk about what a chicken is, scientific names, to make sure that everybody's seeing on the same sheet, how that folded into the definition of domestic fowl, and then how all that worked within the relationship of livestock. So all those things had to be clarified in the definitions section. We also had to add in Section 662, the keeping of limited number of chickens per the LDO is not prohibited, so we just wanted to make sure, as Mr. Olmo mentioned earlier, to make sure the two different sides of the house are synchronized, and that's what this section did. Very specifically, we had to add in 665, the chickens aren't allowed to run at large. Previously, that section of the ordinance dealt with dogs and cats only, did not deal with chickens, so we added those specifically to the, to 665. And then in Section 671, which is the nuisance piece, we did very specifically want to put in there that the normal clucking of chickens would not constitute a nuisance. So we added some very specific language to that end, and that some more-- we cleaned that ordinance up a little bit and talked about the keeping of any kind of animals that attracted rodents, snakes, and other pests would constitute a nuisance. And then finally, we added the home composting part to make it very clear that chicken waste could be used inside the composting bin.
And a few other comments and things that we've covered as we've moved through this process, both in police and in planning. We pointed out that this is an initiative, a new program, that will have potentially staff implications for resources, investigation, permit, you know, management and those kinds of things. And we just wanted, as appointed officials and as council, as elected officials in our community needs to know, when you embark on a new program, you have to be willing to pay for that and manage those kinds of activities. We don't know the extent of this yet. One thing we'll be able to do with permits is be able to monitor and get a feel for the level of interest in activity over time. Again, that accessory use permit fee is a one-time $50 fee per property. And we also have to make it clear that folks have concerns or confusion about, well, if the town allows this generally, and what does that have to do, how does that relate to our own private deed restrictions, our covenants, our conditions, our restrictions? And those override and overrule the town ordinance provisions if they're more restrictive, if they're more strict. So while we may say, in all of these locations, and somebody right now is interested in doing this, if they live in a subdivision, and that homeowners association has covenants that say you can't have fowl or chickens, or, and that's, then they can enforce that alone. So the town would be making it available, but you still have to meet the higher threshold and the more restrictive set of regulations. So with that summary and the changes that we've outlined for you since it went to public hearing and since your discussion, staff would recommend approval of these changes to both the land development ordinance and the town code that would permit backyard chickens in more residential areas, as described for you this evening. So with that, Mr. Chairman will answer questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Ms. Muir?
What's the effective date of the ordinance change, assuming that it goes through council? Does it become effective immediately?
Yeah, ordinances are effective immediately. So there was some concern about giving homeowners time to understand more. Council has the option to delay the effective date, but all of our ordinances, as we work on them, become effective the evening that they're adopted.
Mr. President?
Can you go to Slide 108, I think? Okay, 107.
Jeff's got a guess.
Okay. Outdoor slaughter prohibited. The staff report I have, Section 3 says onsite slaughter prohibited. And I know in our work session, we had discussed the differences between the two. Can you clarify, is it outdoor slaughter or onsite slaughter?
I can't remember what the discussion was. We had, the council originally had talked about no outdoor slaughter.
Exactly.
And as we drafted it, we thought that that was where, well, no outdoor if you can really see it. So when we originally drafted it, we said, you know, if it's visible or whatever, and they said, no, we want to make sure it's no outdoor. So I believe, is that what the language?
Page six of 10.
Page six of 10?
On site.
Oh, it has onsite. Yeah, I think the board talked about whether onsite or not.
Yeah, I know, in our work session, we had--
At all, whether onsite at all. I guess that's something you'll have to weigh in on at this point, help us.
I'll put my two cents in, and I am opposed to having the onsite slaughter prohibition.
Opposed?
Can you say that again? You're opposed to--
I'm opposed to having the onsite slaughter prohibition. So I'm in favor of no outdoor slaughter, but if somebody wants to slaughter in a garage, that's their prerogative.
I feel the same way. I have a dead chicken in my refrigerator right now, I don't know where it was slaughtered, but I don't see that there's any difference between it being off somewhere else and in my garage, nobody saw it, none of my neighbors saw it being slaughtered or herded or anything.
So if the board moved it forward, you'd have to make it clear that that Section 3 there, dealing with that, should say outdoor versus quote-unquote onsite.
Other questions?
Right now, chickens are allowed in R-40 and R-80 and such. Do we have enough of that to know whether or not there've been any incidents, any complaints or any problems with chickens in such backyards?
I can't speak to the specific R-40 and R-80. We have gotten a few complaints fairly recently, since this became getting a little bit of attention, but because we were in the process of considering an ordinance change, we don't, we haven't worked towards making notifications because we anticipate this ordinance change may be coming through. So the only thing, we have gotten some complaints on roosters, and we went ahead and made notifications that that's not allowed, because even if this goes through, roosters won't be allowed going forward. But we haven't addressed chickens with the ones that have been brought forward since the start.
But you have received some--
We have, yes, that's correct.
Thank you for the prohibition on roosters. I recently had to spend a weekend resident with a rooster, they got up at 4:00 a.m. every morning. I can't agree with that more.
Their clocks aren't always accurate. That's what they do.
Other questions?
The R-40 and R-80, you said that breaks it up into two groups, R-40, R-80, we're not really addressing with this, we're creating kind of a new subset. The pen provision, as far as no chickens outside of the pen, is that provision going to apply to R-40 and R-80?
None of these would. So today, when you read the language in-- I'm going to find the right language. Bottom of page four of 10, so 534J1, doesn't specify any setbacks, enclosures, or anything. So it allows that activity to occur the way it's been occurring, as allowed, in those zoning districts. What you're seeing in the next section, two other zoning districts, is only applicable to the non-R-40, non-R-80.
Okay, thank you.
The complaints that have been received so far on the R-40 and R-80, do you know if they involve chickens that were within a pen, or chickens that were running around a yard?
I don't know what zoning district the ones we have received have been. They may not have been R-40 and R-80. I don't know. I know that some of them have been in much smaller lots that I know are below R-40 and R-80, but I don't know that we've received any that apply to R-40 and R-80.
But if the complaints you've received, where are they are, do you know if they involve pinned chickens or chickens running freely in a yard?
I don't know. I know there have been some that have been outside of a pen, if a pen did exist. We've been told that, but whether or not they specifically had a pen, I don't know that, sir.
Okay.
Question that I had was, once somebody complains about a person that is housing some chickens, it's either going to be that there's a noise issue, or maybe a chicken escaped, or something like that. In reading this, changes to the ordinance itself, code ordinance. I get to this section of annoying sounds, and I see where the only change that's in here is the word animal possessor. Possessor has been lined out, and owner has been substituted in sub-paragraph two. And then if you move down to sub-paragraph four, we come back to possessor twice. Is this just a typo, or is there some logical reason for not wanting possessor in one paragraph and wanting it elsewhere? Lost as to what we're trying, if anything, and this may be an accidental--
I think you're right. In subsection two, we specifically changed it to owner, and I think it should be the same in four as well.
So if somebody complains, what's the mechanism here for-- complaint is, we see too many chickens, or they think they see too many chickens, et cetera. What is actually going to happen?
I think it depends on what the nature of the complaint is. This will be something that zoning and the police department have to work jointly on. If it's something dealing with a coop, the number of chickens or something like that, I think that would fall into the planning arena. If it's something dealing with chickens that are running at large, being kept in unsanitary conditions, something of that nature, that would be something that the police department would handle.
And if the coop's okay, and the number of chickens is okay, but they just didn't happen to get an accessory use permit--
That'd be a zoning--
We just say, pay the 50 bucks and you'll be okay.
Yeah, we'd have to, you know, remedy, and we do that with lots of uses, and make them come into compliance in terms of double-checking all of those kinds of things. And Tony's right, I mean, we just would have to work these things together, probably, you know, have a common shared database that we'd be able to, both departments, our zoning enforcement staff and police animal control would have, to be able to get in there and be able to look. And we do this on lots of complaints about lots of things that come to town hall anyway, where you have several departments or divisions within departments even responsible for certain activities, and we just have to work internally to coordinate and get the right folks together to go out and figure out how to deal with a particular complaint or remedy an issue, a situation.
So if the complaint was noise, police are going to go out, animal control's going to go out, are you going to ask to see an accessory use permit as part of the normal process?
I don't know that we would ask to see that, we may check with planning to see if one exists, when that is available, it could be weekends, it could be nights, so we wouldn't have immediate access to that. But it's something we would check with our own town department to verify.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If I might add, it looks to me that the compliance and enforcement aspect of this amendment and town code, has it been prescribed, or is it just you're going to work as you go along? I mean, there's no prescription for the enforcement and compliance.
No, I mean, there's no specific language that would spell that out on how to deal with it in this instance, it's just our practices of any kind of, you know, we have to, in planning, would enforce the zoning regulations, police would enforce the town code provisions, and so, I mean, we do it day in and day out on all kinds of things, so this would be adding one additional function to work on.
One question, was there any consideration to basically license? And they could have a little license that would actually be up in their garage, or something like that, that because this is a food, it's different than a pet, just kind of throwing it out, was ever discussed?
I don't believe so, no.
Other questions?
In that case, is someone prepared to make a motion?
Now, make a motion? That we forward round twenty-two B, backyard chickens to council with a motion, with the recommendation for approval. And I move this based on it being consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and that it is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentations.
I'll second.
Does that include Mr. Gascoigne's suggested change of outdoor? Just curious.
That is an excellent question. That is not my personal, if someone chooses to make a friendly amendment later, they may do so, but the original motion.
Just seeking clarification.
Is as written?
Is as written.
It would be in, as written, and what about the other of possessor versus owner in the town code piece that we just covered?
I would expect that would be cleaned up, but doesn't need to be included in the motion.
Considered to clean up?
Right.
I have a, an amendment that I would like to make in the form of a motion to amend.
I think I need a second. Do we have a second?
I'll withdraw my second if that, can you do that?
You go ahead and make the second, and I'll, I'll amend it. Make a motion.
We've got the second.
My motion to amend is to change the six thousand square feet to twelve thousand square feet. And the reason for that is to, with the idea that maybe eventually then we would change it to six thousand square feet, but to give some time to allow more chickens to be in backyards and see how that works out, see if there are too many complaints, if we, you know, gather information from that, then decide that perhaps it's working out real well, we'll change that to six thousand square feet.
I, I believe we need to handle the amendment before we handle the motion, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so discussion on just this amendment?
He needs a second.
Do we have a second?
So I guess it does.
I, I, no second. Okay, other comments on the motion then?
I guess I'd like to make an amendment to add the outdoor versus the onsite change.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on that?
I'll, I'll throw something out there. I kind of feel similar to what was just discussed, let's see how it goes. I would rather see onsite slaughter prohibited until we kind of see how this moves forward, see how this goes, and then possibly take it up at a further time. I'm, I'm happy with as, with the no onsite slaughter.
I'll add, and I was commenting before about already having a dead chicken, but the problem people have with chickens is the live chickens running around in, in backyards and the noise and stuff like that, not the slaughter. I agree with not having outdoor slaughter where neighbors could see it. Some people don't mind it. Other people, even those who, who eat chickens, don't like the idea of the slaughter and would object to it. So I like having, prohibiting it outdoors where others can see it. But inside, from what I've seen and I've been around the entire process, the messy part and the more disgusting part is after the slaughter, you know, dressing and cleaning it and cutting it up and getting it ready to eat and all of that. And that goes on right now with people in kitchens. And if that's allowed, it's not much difference between that and also allowing someone to actually kill the chicken. So I'm in favor of allowing indoor slaughter.
Yeah, I have to admit that I have been killing some animals inside. I've had some mice. And I've put out some, well, I mean, my, my point here is that if you're doing it in your garage behind closed doors, whether it be mice or whatever, I'm not sure how it harms the well-being of the community.
What about some of the, I'm just throwing this out as discussion. What about some of the health infectious diseases, things such as that nature, which might be a reason that would warrant you to slaughter your animal to begin with?
Okay, so are you?
I, I'm just throwing that out as a side, as, as possibly for a health benefit to not allow onsite slaughter, that there might be a health implication. I mean, I.
Yeah, I fully support what Julie is saying. I think you have, if you have a sick chicken and it's got to be put down, what, how is that any different than, you know, than the healthy chicken who's just?
I mean, I have a document.
But, but the other thing is that, you know, there's kind of a pet element too going on and, and, I don't know. I don't have that with mice or bugs or things that I kill in my house, so.
And I guess my comment would be similar to your first one, Ms. Rudy, which is there could be unintended consequences of something that we bring up here that needs to be fully researched. And, you know, at this point, I would be more in favor of, you know, let's get something, try it. If it needs to be attuned and amended, it can be tuned and amended. You know, rather than trying to guess all the things here in real time, whether this is a good practice or not.
I guess I don't know enough about chickens to know how, if you have a chicken, that it's time, it's time, how you, do you take it to a vet? Would a vet slaughter it, or how would you slaughter it if you can't slaughter it yourself?
They take them, they can take them out to other municipalities where slaughtering is allowed, or they can take them to butchers, or they can take them, there are places they can go, because I asked the chicken owner this question. You know, does that, does that leave you empty-handed, you know, so, and it does not.
Okay, so I think we have to deal with this amendment first. And as I said, it was to allow slaughter onsite, but no outdoor slaughter, is that correct?
Well, the amendment is to allow it.
To change onsite.
To change onsite to outdoor. The, that's an amendment to the original.
Allow it indoors.
To, specifically, we, our, our prohibition is for outdoor slaughter, not onsite slaughter. So it's, it's a prohibition, not allow. The language, I think, is a prohibition, right?
The language prohibits onsite. The amendment changes that to outdoor.
This motion.
Further discussion on this?
Yeah, just my two cents. I'm, I'm all for government regulation when, when I can buy into the public purpose. I guess I'm not seeing the public purpose of not allowing somebody to slaughter a chicken in their garage. And I understand the, the possible health implications, but I guess I'm not seeing that as a, to implement a government regulation. I don't see that public purpose as being enough to implement a governmental regulation. So if somebody wants to have a chicken and slaughter it, that's up to them.
Any other discussion on this amendment? In that case, I'm going to call the vote, and I want to be very specifically clear. Your amendment is to change the language in the ordinance from prohibit slaughter, onsite slaughter, to prohibit outdoor slaughter.
Correct.
That's correct. All in favor of the amendment as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to need the hands here, folks. Okay, it looks like we have five in favor. All those opposed to the amendment as stated?
No.
No.
I believe we have four, so that motion barely carries five to four. Now we need to go back to Ms. Muir's original motion, which was to, well, I just.
Yep.
I guess, I guess we've just amended your motion.
Has amended.
That's right.
Effectively, okay. And I'm not sure whether you have to accept the amendment or not.
I don't. I don't have to, that's why we voted.
Okay, so do we have to vote on her motion, deny it, and then?
No, you just voted on my motion, and it has an amendment attached to it.
Okay, so the amendment is attached to your motion, you agree with that?
Okay.
Okay, any discussion, any other discussion on the motion to approve the ordinance as stated with the amendment as defined?
I do. I know in our work session, we had a discussion on keeping the chickens in the pen versus a fenced-in backyard. And I wasn't sure when we left work session, I guess I was under the impression that it was still the backyard. This one is in a pen structure, backyards are not permitted. So I didn't know if we wanted to discuss that, because my recollection from work session was backyards are appropriate as far as being the fenced-in area. But now it's the pen that's connected to the coop, is that correct?
Yes, it's more, more restricted, and so, applying the ten-foot setback, in effect, chicken activities have to meet the setback. If it's ten feet, and you could fence your entire backyard to create the pen and the coop and whatever beyond the setback, within, you could end up having two fences. You could have an existing perimeter fence. Then you could decide you wanted to fence in the entire, I'm going to honor the ten-foot setbacks all the way around. I'm going to create my pen as being the rest of my backyard. But you could not rely on that existing perimeter fence, because there's no way to know exactly what material that is. Would it contain chickens or not, whereas you know in the pen area and then the coop it would. So we made it very clear that that's how it was being rewritten to clarify that point.
Okay.
Other discussion on the motion?
Just a question, but am I correct in assuming that you have to have a wire across the top of that, that entire enclosed area, right? The coop?
No. That would be for the outdoor activity areas?
So surrounded by, is perimeter-based, not over the top?
Over the top.
Other comments, questions?
I do have a, a comment, which is, there's one school of thought that says maybe an ordinance is good if not everyone is thoroughly happy with it. And, you know, as shown by this amendment vote, just on that one piece. And so I know some people would like more chickens, some would like zero chickens, some would like neighbor approval, some would not. I think, once again, the staff has done an amazing job with some pretty specific direction from council on getting something on the books that we can start with, that tries to honor all the perspectives of, of everyone, you know, that need to be balanced in the community. So I will support the, the, the motion, even though I did not, you know, even though I voted against the amendment on balance. I think this is something that gets us started and can be tuned over time.
I think you're right, Brent, they did an excellent job.
Yes, they did.
Other comments?
I just want to piggyback on that about not agreeing with everything, but still supporting it. I don't agree with everything in this. I am in favor of not having the pen scenario. I think perimeter fences, because somebody somewhere is going to have to look at the pen and verify that that's capable of holding chickens. That same person can come and look at my fence and say that my fence is capable of holding chickens. So I'm not going to vote against this because of that provision, but I would like to see that pen provision taken out and perimeter fences be allowed to be the boundary. So, you know, I'm in favor of free range chicken, range, free range chickens.
The, I think one thing also that should be considered is that if you allow the chicken to, to go all the way up to the perimeter, chickens can stick their little heads through those kinds of fences. Little kids can stick their hands through fences. You would have more chicken, more kid-to-chicken contact that way. Whether or not that's a problem, we could go all night discussing, some people object to it, feel that it is a health problem, some people feel that it's not. But for right now, I'd prefer to keep the chickens away from the perimeter fence to avoid the problem of, the possible problem of kid-to-chicken contact. I also would like to note that when they have strong reason to, chickens can fly a limited amount. Not very far, not very high, but they can get up into the air.
Let's hope we don't have to deal with that one.
Yeah.
Are there other comments? If not, if we've worn ourselves out on this, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor, well, let, let's restate the motion to make sure we've got it right. Motion to approve amended with a provision that forbids outdoor slaughter. All those in favor of the motion as made and amended, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Did that carry unanimously?
Yes, it did.
Oh, that would carry unanimously.
For the amendment?
To the amendment, okay.
Mr. Nath, I've got it, Shirley. Nath, Muir, Miller, and Rudy.
Thank you for taking notes.
I'm trying.
Okay, I think we've taken care of twenty-two B. At this point, we can run on down to line development ordinance round twenty D, which is retail sales in parking lots. This is another one where we spent some time in work sessions, so hopefully we're fairly far along in the process. Please take us the rest of the wire.
Good evening. The next amendment for your consideration this evening is item D from round twenty. This amendment is regarding retail sales in parking lots, and this amendment's been brought forward by staff at the request of local retailers. The fundamental question that's been raised by these retailers is whether or not businesses should be allowed to display and sell certain seasonal products from their parking lots, and if so, what restrictions should apply. This amendment went to a public hearing with the council on February the twenty-third and has since been discussed by the planning and zoning board at two work sessions and a regular meeting. If you choose to forward this proposed amendment to the council tonight, then it would be considered by the council on August the ninth with the site design standards and the backyard chicken amendments that you previously discussed. The proposed amendment would allow seasonal sales of horticultural products in retail parking lots in the spring. Specific use standards are included that relate to duration, location, and size. The proposed amendment would also revise the number of days allowed for off-site sales of agricultural products so as to be consistent with other temporary uses, and make some general changes to reorganize and clarify text pertaining to accessory and temporary uses. The one remaining key issue is the permitted timeframe during which seasonal sales would be permitted to occur. After meeting with local store, store managers and hearing their preferences, town staff recommended a ninety-day period from March first to June first. At the planning and zoning board's last work session, however, there was some discussion regarding the possibility of changing this timeframe to run from March fifteenth to June fifteenth. Although the currently proposed amendment still includes the March first to June first timeframe, staff is comfortable with either scenario. At this time, we would recommend that you select a preferred timeframe and forward the proposed amendment to the town council with a recommendation for approval.
Do we have questions? No questions? I will point out for anyone that's listening that we did have an extensive work session on this topic as well. Matter of fact, I think we considered it twice, didn't we?
Yes.
And so we are, we have fairly exhaustively considered this. If we have no questions, does someone want to offer a motion, please?
I do have one question before that, just on, on the dates, you said staff is comfortable with either. You have no particular recommendation?
We.
Or do you?
We, based on the conversations that we had with two of the store managers for two of the larger retailers that were interested in this provision, based on they're both being interested in late February to early June and inventory coming in, we left things consistent with their preference, the March first to June first. But we think that the, the difference between the two, two weeks is close enough that, you know, if the majority of the planning and zoning board feels strongly, that the other timeframe is preferable. We're comfortable working with and enforcing that.
Thank you.
I think part of that discussion came up, I, I know I generated part of that discussion because we were sitting on the eleventh of June and things were still kind of moving in that area. And we talked about with Memorial Day weekend kind of being, when people are starting to do some, some of that work, giving them time to follow up with, with additional. do some of that work, giving them time to follow up with additional products and things like that, so.
Clarify, the retailers that you talk to prefer the earlier date window?
They do. They begin to bring in their excess inventory for the seasonal sales, because that's what this is. They have approved outdoor sales along a lot of, the front of a lot of these stores, but they're looking as they expand their inventory for the spring rush to grow and move beyond those normal boundaries that are shown on their approved site plan. And they start bringing in that additional material in late February. So they were looking for the ability to begin to expand in early March, so.
I guess my point is if that's what they want, they're probably trying to sell us something. They probably know when they need it to sell to us.
I don't feel strongly about it, but how many people do we talk to?
We have visited four different sites and we met with two managers of two of the stores.
Two managers of two stores. Do we know how many sites there are?
We met with two of the larger box home improvement providers and observed two of the smaller medium-size home improvement-type retailers here in town. So the, I guess I should add that in terms of enforcement, you know, we've, while this amendment has been considered, we've had a stay in enforcement with this issue during the spring. So we haven't had specific dates that we've been looking to enforce with the retailers. Once there is something on the books, we'll look to enforce that. We're comfortable working with either timeframe. Arguably, it may be easier to delay them in putting inventory out than, you can look at it either way. And that's why we're comfortable working with either scenario. So if the majority of the board feels that having that extra leeway after Memorial Day weekend's a good thing, then, you know, we'd encourage you to pick the March 15th to June 15th timeframe and we can work with that. And I think that local retailers would look to work with that, too. They'd be glad to have the 90 days because right now they don't have that opportunity.
Other questions?
I'll just make a note on that, just to throw some fact out for this date. You know, our average frost-free date in, for this location is April 15th. I don't think March 15th is that much of a stretch. So I'm in support of the March 15th. Is that right, March 15th to June 15th?
That's right, March 15th to June 15th.
Just to throw that out as a little tidbit. And we've had freezes April 22nd, I mean, we've had freezes well into April, so.
I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion. See if we can go. This is a motion to forward LDO round 20D retail sales and parking lot to council with a recommendation to approve with the dates altered to March 15th to June 15th. And I move that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Do we have a second? Mr. Nath seconds? Discussion? I think we beat this poor horse to the ground. In that case, I will call a vote. All of us in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is unanimous. And we're going to move on to our last case of the evening. This is Renaissance cottages at Regency. It's case 12REZ08. And Ms. Bierman? Ms. Bierman isn't going to do it again.
Mr. Nichols.
Well, Mr. Nichols, I'm afraid I've missed you again.
Yeah, me. All right, good evening. This is a request to amend the previously approved Regency Park PDD to increase the maximum number of dwelling units allowed for track five. Subject property is located on the west side of Regency Parkway, south of US Highway 1, approximately 1,200 feet north of Glade Park Road. Primary entrance to the development on track five is Angelica Circle. Property is owned PDD major and is identified as track five of the Regency Park PDD. This is a map of the PDD land use plan. According to the PDD document, track five allows a mixture of residential dwelling types with a maximum of 114 dwelling units. The applicant is requesting to increase the total number of dwelling units allowed to 137. Next few slides help illustrate what's being requested. In 2006, a site plan showing 114 dwelling units was approved for the subject property and covered the land area shown here in orange. In 2010, there were a series of revisions to the 2006 plan. The revisions essentially involved reconfiguring many of the lots to incorporate the lots that were shown here in green. In order to maintain the 114 lot maximum, the lots shown in green were removed from the approved site plan. The end result was that the 114 lots were created in a smaller overall land area than shown on the 2006 plan. The slide shows how the lots look today. The area in orange are the 114 lots that have already been platted. The area in green is the approximate area where the additional lots would be located if their zoning requests were approved. Kari's land use plan designates a subject parcel for both medium-density residential use, which is three to eight dwelling units per acre, and also open space. The area in which the applicant is requesting to increase the maximum number of units is within the MDR designation. According to Kari GS data, a portion of the property is impacted by stream buffers. The Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facility's master plan shows a multi-use trail along the property's frontage on Regency Parkway. This trail has already been constructed. Property is located off Regency Parkway, which is identified as a collector avenue on the town's comprehensive transportation plan. The main entrance to track five is Angelica Circle, which is a local roadway that connects to Regency Parkway. This map shows the properties that submitted protest petitions on the proposed rezoning. There are three valid properties that submitted petitions. However, the area of these properties located within the 100-foot protest buffer does not amount to 5% or more of the total buffer area. Therefore, this is not an overall valid protest on the proposed rezoning. Some of the concerns listed on the petition submitted for this case include increased density, traffic, congestion on Regency Parkway, noise, and tree removal. At the public hearing, there were no comments from citizens or council members. This includes staff's presentation. I believe the applicant is available.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates, and I'm here tonight representing the property owners for track five within Regency cottages. As staff has pointed out, the property is located in the Regency Park PDD. The existing zoning allows 114 dwelling units, and the proposed rezoning increases the number of dwelling units from 114 to 137. There had been changes in the original subdivision site plan for track five allowing the creation of more narrow units and providing both attached and detached units. As a result, as was shown on the map that staff had up there, the 18 units that were originally planned along the westernmost side of Angelica Circle were shifted to the interior of Angelica Circle. The proposal is to rezone track five by amending the PDD to allow the development of 23 additional townhome units in the area that originally contained the 18 units that were relocated. This, the proposed units are located in an area that had previously been designated for development in the existing site plan. Want to point out that in the approval of track five, the location of these additional lots does not affect any of the approved open space or anything that was part of that track five. It was actually, all of track five had potential of having lots within it. Another important thing to point out, in order to submit the application for this track five, the owners had to get every single person in track five to sign off on the application, which meant there were existing property owners within track five that had already bought lots. So this process started many, 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 many months ago, but part of the time that took us to get here was ensuring that all the property owners that had already bought homes, since we were amending all of track five, not only were the, not only was it builder lots that we had to get people to sign off on, we also had to get people who had already bought lots to sign off on. So as you see in your staff report, there is a whole long list of property owners that are affected by this piece, and every single one of them have signed off on this application. There were a couple of people with, you know, as staff pointed out, that had comments. We, as the applicant, were never contacted during the process, you know, once everybody understood at the first public hearing that they were going to have to sign the application, we started working with them. So we really did not get any input from anybody outside of Regency, and like staff pointed out, no one did come to the public hearing to speak out, one way or the other, and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I have one question. I think there's a track six in the north of track five, right? Is that correct?
This is track five.
Right, and there's another track six. Can you show that track six?
Track six is just to the north of track five.
Right.
That's undeveloped at this time.
One question was raised about the access to the track six. How will that be made?
It'll be through track five.
It will be through track five.
Yes. There's already access points laid out for that.
Thank you.
Can you tell me what's planned for track six?
The land use plan calls for concrete care, or office, or mixed use. So it's fairly flexible.
And I know there was one, one comment from one of the protests concerning tree removal, from one of the pictures, I didn't know the slide number. It appeared that, plus having driven around that, possibly there weren't any trees that were still standing. They're already gone, so.
They're already gone because they anticipated this area developing. So, yes, sir, you're correct, there are no trees.
It almost appears like they're ready to develop, or?
They are. The utilities are nearby. I mean, yes, they're ready, but without this amendment, they could not build on that because when the original PDD amendment came in for this track, the applicant determined that they only wanted 114 lots, even though they could have asked for more probably, but that 114 was originally shown on that layout to encompass the whole piece. Then things changed, lots, you know, got a little bit smaller, and then they just moved everything interior and that strip was left. But you're correct, there are no trees left.
Also, traffic. I know this isn't that many more, well, one other question probably for the applicant. Will these be attached townhomes, or will they be almost attached like some of the other properties with a little space between them, or what?
They're separated. Right, that's what I thought. I had to make sure.
Okay.
Yes, they're very similar to what's there already, some here. They're like detached townhomes. Yes, sir.
So they're similar to what's on Angelica Circle that are already built?
One of the things that I did not point out, that was important to the original homeowners, was ensuring that the folks that are building in there now, these units that go in here will continue to look like the ones that are being constructed right now, because it was important to the existing neighbors that there was continuity. So you've got the original homes, you've got the homes that are under construction now, and then this portion within the track will look exactly like the ones that are under construction right now.
Okay, then, traffic. I presume there's no traffic analysis report anything due to the low number of drivers to be going in and out. Is there any problem now, or do you anticipate any problem particularly with track six when that's developed, as far as making a left turn from Angelica onto Regency Parkway?
I'm not aware of there being any issues there. If track six does develop to an intensity where they require to do a traffic study, that'll be evaluated at that time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions?
I have, I'd like to make a motion. Please. If there are no other questions, I move the board forward case number 12REZ08 to the town council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Shaw makes a motion. Mr. Nath seconds?
Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Rogers.
Or Mr. Rogers, I'm sorry. Do we have a discussion on the motion?
I'll say I'm going to vote against it, and it's more a principle thing in that we see cases so often that are contingent upon the density and the number of units, and we discuss them, you know, perhaps more than we should even sometimes, and what the number is, and it's approved, and then site plans are approved, and people have expectations, and the fact that we discovered that, you know, we could reconfigure these after the initial approval and fit in some more in this particular case, I think, may make sense, but I worry about the precedent and just having that level of assurance. So it's more of a principle of having a level of assurance of how many things were approved and making sure that it gets full scrutiny as opposed to comment on this particular case.
Other comments? Seeing, now I'm going to call the motion for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries eight to one. And I believe since we have known new business specified earlier in the agenda, that that brings us to the end of our agenda tonight, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn tonight.
Takes a motion, second?
Second.
Motion seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.